Because of the way the zoom set out, the names jump all over the place. So sometimes you swing and miss.
Just don't do it again.
All right. All right. Well, um, let's see. I got six fifty nine. So, um, Stephanie, do you, uh, I'm assuming you're just raising your hand. So you get unmuted?
Yes, and I've unmuted myself. Oh, sorry. Let me unmute myself. I mean, let me lower my hand here.
Can barely hear you, Stephanie.
Oh, sorry. I just putting my hand down. That's all.
All right, we are just about seven o'clock here. Last call, folks, to raise your hands to participate in public comment. Uh, Hillary, I see you just joined, so I'll just give that last call again to raise your hand to participate in public comment. Right now I see no hands raised.
Okay, Mike, we're at seven o'clock.
All right, there we go. I'll get the flag up.
Okay. And no names, right?
No names.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Katie.
You want to do the pledge?
Yep.
Pledge allegiance.
Yes, sir. So Katie, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
I'd be, I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces in our first.
Thank you.
Okay. No public comment, Mike?
Uh, no hands raised.
Okay, so we'll move right along to item three, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda. Items three, A through F, as in Frank.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I just want to make a few remarks for the, for some of these because we have, um, some lovely donations that were made. We're including our minutes and there's nothing from the tax collector. Parks and Rec received, um, three hundred dollars from New Milford Septic, three hundred from Emin's Tree, two fifty from M and O Construction, two hundred from Gregory James Gallery, a hundred dollars from Walmart and fifty dollars from Stop and Shop. And they, uh, Parks and Rec would like to thank all of those donors. The police department received a lovely donation of fifteen hundred dollars from Mr. Louis Burns of New Milford designated to be used for painting and signage of our new, uh, NMPD motorcycles. And the social services, uh, received a great donation of ten thousand dollars from Donald Furlow as a memorial to his late wife Dorothy Furlow. That's the mother of, uh, Jim Furlow. And he asked that, this is a comment that he made, uh, which I think is lovely. Uh, he included this sentiment. It reads, "In early 2020, when COVID-19 came ashore, a pandemic quickly ensued. Quiet community workers were thrust to the forefront. They quickly became dedicated essential workers, now wearing gloves, masks, and sometimes gowns, maintaining social distance. Standing against the virus rage, they stayed strong and served to meet the many expanding community needs." And we certainly thank him for his, uh, ten thousand dollar donation. Uh, and that's to be used for essential items for the food bank. And then the last item is the youth agency received a grant of five thousand five hundred dollars from the Connecticut Community Foundation and the United Way of Waterbury.
Amazing gifts by, uh, by everybody, businesses, businesses and personnel. It's, uh, the generosity of this community never ceases to amaze me.
That's right. So we have a second and.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item four, Mayor, your remarks.
Thank you, Katie. Like to start off first by congratulating our eleven U Tigers of winning the eleven U Fall League Championship in baseball. So great job to the coaches and staff, our New Milford Youth Baseball and Softball Organization. So great job by them. So thank you to the directors in the Milford Dog Park, also known as Candle Wolf Dog Park, as they had for their second year running. Their Halloween costume party with a lot of dogs, the parades, Councilman Cosgrove also attended. Judges, so thank you for everyone who participated. Also, thank you to the Milford Bulls Cheer and Bulls Organizations. As their cheer had a presentation that they, uh, gave over the weekend at Bulls Field. Great to see the young ladies and the staff do a wonderful job for those in, for those that were in attendance. So thank you to the Bulls. Um, COVID numbers, and these are numbers as we talk about every two weeks, these are not. Since March, these are in no way indicative of those who have, uh, COVID currently, but now the state tracks them. So with today's numbers, I'm speaking with Mike Cressman, uh, the total of the state is sixty-four thousand four twenty-one. In Litchfield County, it's, uh, twenty, uh, thousand ninety-nine, seventy-seven since Friday for the whole county. Hospitalizations are currently at one, which is down one, which is good news, on Friday for the whole county. New Milford is at three eighty-six, and that's up five from Friday. So these numbers are indicative of, uh, Saturday, Sunday, and partially Monday. Uh, also, uh, is just an update concerning voting. So, uh, as we all know, uh, a week from tomorrow will be, uh, where people can go to the voting polls and vote. They can currently go, uh, and drop their absentee ballot in the box at Church Street, uh, which is protected by cameras and also it's, uh, embedded. If concrete is not going anywhere. Uh, also, from six AM to six PM, they can go to the polls. You are gonna go to the polls, please wear a mask. It keeps six foot social distancing. Uh, also, same day of voting, you can do that at Town Hall. Uh, and that is at, uh, the Church Street entrance. There will be a police officer there plus staff. It will escort you, uh, to Loretta Brookley Room, where then you can, um, uh, apply, register, and then vote there. And that's the election day registration, the EDR, as they call it. That's gonna be at Town Hall. Uh, also, our New Milford Police Department, speaking with Chief Saruto, will be patrolling the Poland districts with extra patrols, as well as Church Street. And as I said before, which the ETR is at the Loretta Brookley Room, the EDR, apologize. Um, also concerning, uh, uh, Dean of Milford PD and speaking with Chief Saruto, I have good news. Uh, our crime statistics for all offenses for this half of the year, uh, is down twenty-two point six percent from last year. Last year, we had an reduction as well. So thank you to the chief and the women of the New Milford Police Force for an outstanding job. Also, last week, we had a public, uh, meeting concerning the sidewalks. Uh, you can view the presentation, Beta. You can go to the town website, click Government, click Live Stream Meetings, and the recording is on the page. Uh, public comment is still invited, and you can send that, and we'll make sure we put that on our social sites, to public, uh, hyphen works at newmilkford.org, and we'll push that out. Uh, so please, uh, if you get a chance, please review the presentation. If you have any input, uh, please go by commenting to that email so that Beta, who's our consultant on that, uh, can, uh, put that in to, uh, into the, do the minutes. Uh, also, with the roads, we're continuing to wind year three road construction. I'll bring the council, our next, we have kind of a total of the roads, it's approximately twenty-eight miles that we did this year, which is mill and pave, which is crack seal, chip seal, fog seal, combination of all of these, uh, to really help, uh, uh, our roads and bring our roads up, uh, to, uh, drivable condition. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move to item five, appointments. I move to approve the following appointments, uh, for the local emergency planning committee. Uh, this would be Jim Furlow for a term beginning October twenty-six, twenty twenty, and that's an indefinite term. Uh, then we have the Ethics Committee.
Could we do these separately, please? Katie, would you mind doing both of these separately?
Oh, not at all. So my first motion is to approve the following appointment, which is Jim Furlow, uh, our EOC Director to the Local Emergency Planning Committee. The term to begin October twenty-six, twenty twenty, and that's an indefinite. So he'll stay there till whenever.
And also, we have a second from Councilman Cosgrove. And also, just for the minutes, uh, Mr. Furlow being the EOC Director will also be chairman of this committee as well. Uh, so we thank Mr. Furlow for putting in his time in this respect as well.
Okay.
So we have a first and a second. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Second, uh, part of this was, uh, move to approve for the Ethics Committee, which has five members, three alternates, and it's a four-year term. The appointment of Robert Coppola, uh, and Lisa Heda as an, Robert Coppola is a full, uh, seat and Lisa Heda as an alternate. Their terms begin October the twenty-sixth of twenty twenty and run through January thirty-first. For Mr. Coppola, it's twenty twenty-four, and for Ms. Heda, it's for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, um, I'm not gonna support, um, you know, either Bob or Lisa Heda. Um, the names did not come from the Democratic Town Committee. And, um, I, I just can't, um, support either one of them. Neither one of them have been what I would call really true Democrats. And, um, I, uh, you know, you, several years ago, you had Mr. Barnes coming in screaming and yelling at Mr. Gronback because he put, you know, Republicans on that, you know, didn't come from you. And we do have a longstanding history on this council of allowing Democrats to, the Democratic Town Committee, to bring their people forward. So I am opposed to, to both these candidates.
I, I guess from my point of view, um, knowing both, I can't imagine, uh, better, uh, people to have on our Ethics Committee. I, I think that, uh, both nonpartisan, which I think is important in, in any committee, let alone this one. And, uh, again, I think there are two eminently qualified people.
And, and for the record, I'd also like to mention, Mr. Coppola. He's a full group seat. Mr. Coppola is a member of BFW, American Legion. Uh, also is a trustee of the Milford Historical Society. He is a past president of the Milford Lions Club. He is a recipient of the Lions Club Melvin Jones Award in two thousand and eleven. He also is the town recipient of the Leonardo da Vinci Award, with the past town council member, having served three terms. Past member of the Board of Education, from two thousand and one to two thousand and five. Also a former member of the Commission on A.D., a past member and fourth, also former vice chairman of Hillside Elderly Housing. He was also a past, uh, a Board of Education member. Also, he was the chairman, uh, of the, well, of, he was trustee of the New Milford Public Library. And also, as a veteran, Coppola, and received the Bronze Star. Going with Ms. Heda, her background, she has experienced investigating fraud. She was an internal auditor for a Fortune one hundred company. Traveling throughout the world, evaluating internal control systems, as well as investigating allegations. She brings real experience and demonstrated fact-based approach that I think is very important as we follow the ethics guidelines and protocols.
So, um, I would just like to say, just for the record, I am not questioning their ethics or their qualifications. I am questioning the fact that, um, they were, their names are not brought forward by the Democratic Town Committee. Just as you would expect, if you were on the other end, you would be expecting your Republicans, from your Republican Town Committee, to be put forward. So that's the issue.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, uh, move, item six, the town council meeting schedule for next year, twenty twenty-one, move to approve, uh, as per the schedule that I believe you all received. Uh, I did check, and all those dates are not holidays, so I guess it's okay. I'm just gonna bring up one thing that, uh, we only have one regular meeting, as we usually do, scheduled for August. And I just, you know, we do end up with a lot on the next agenda. So if anybody wants to discuss that, because I did hear some people weren't happy with the long meeting we had after missing one, but just a comment.
We have a motion, and we have a second from there. Any other discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say, can't we always call a meeting if there seems to be something really important? I mean, a lot of people are, who knows what's gonna happen next summer, but most here, people, a lot of people are away and on vacation.
Yeah, we can always have a special meeting. I, it was just a comment that was made to me, so I made a note of it to bring it up.
As it gets closer to the date, there's more information on there. Absolutely.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, item number seven, uh, motion to approve the road closure requested by the Women's Club of Greater New Milford. That would be to close the Southern Crossover on the Green, uh, November seventh, that's a Saturday, from nine AM to four PM for the annual Operation Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving Food Drive.
Second.
Formerly called Stuff the Gazabo, uh, pending approval from the Traffic Authority. This, they have, they have to wait for them to meet.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Any abstentions? Thank you.
And item eight is an update from Finance Director Greg Asapow.
Good evening, all. This is a financial update as of September. Uh, the auditors are in town for the next three weeks, and today was their first day. An update on taxes, as of close of business Friday, October ninth, the town had collected approximately fifteen hundred dollars more than it had for this period last year. The deferral period is over, and the town has been made whole. We received this year's installment of the Waste Management Settlement of two point seven million dollars. The balance in this fund is currently sixteen million, five hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents. There are two remaining payments in this settlement. Expenditures and revenues. Expenditures on a cash basis are at thirty-one point nine percent of budget. On a straight line basis, they are expected to be at twenty-five percent. Front-loading of pension, prepayment of health insurance premiums and bond payments contribute to this. One area that bears watching is police overtime, which is at thirty-two point five percent of budget. Um, we will be receiving some reimbursements from the State DOT and the Board of Ed, so over time, this should smooth out. But will, it still bears watching. Salaries are within the twenty-five percent expected straight line expenditure pattern. Revenues are at forty-five point eight percent of budget. Taxes overall are fifty-three point seven percent of budget, with current taxes at fifty-four point eight percent. Interest income remains an ongoing concern, and it, as it is unlikely, we will make budget in that area. Aging and youth agency revenues are lagging behind the trend, and bear watching. COVID-19 appears to be having a detrimental impact on those agencies' revenue so far. Overall, on a cash basis, expenditures total twenty-five million, one hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. And revenues total forty-seven million, four hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Leaving the town with a positive cash flow of twenty-two million, two hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Questions, comments?
Doug? Greg, thank you for the, the numbers. Um, just to go back on the, um, on the Waste Management Fund, you had mentioned there's sixteen million, five hundred sixty-three thousand, and there's two payments, uh, remaining, correct?
Yes.
You, what, what's, do you have those numbers in front of you, uh, what's left?
What do you mean, what's left?
For payments to the next two payments.
Two point seven million each, so that's five point four million.
That's, okay. And, um, you mentioned that we're at a twenty-two million and change plus?
Positive cash, positive cash flow, yes.
Where does that leave us, uh, from last year, exactly the same time last year?
Doug, I'm gonna have to get back on you. I would, I would say it's analogous fairly close because, uh, again, we were made whole on taxes, and that's like eighty percent of our revenue. Um, and, uh, frankly, the expenditure patterns, I see nothing out of the ordinary. So with that in mind, I would guarantee it's gonna be within a couple hundred thousand dollars of this, but I'll get back to you on that. I'll send you an email.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you for both. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Um, yeah, Greg, um, the deferred tax program that we put in place due to COVID, um, you know, when we voted on that, I was pretty hesitant. I was concerned, um, on us running short of cash and what that might mean to the town. Doesn't appear that was the case. What's your kind of assessment? Uh, were we adversely really impacted at all from that?
No, not, eve- even if we had, um, experienced, uh, less collections in this, I had shown that we would have been, uh, still solvent, and I would not had to have liquidated any investments. Um, this was much better than I had ever hoped for. Uh, the taxpayers of the town came through. Um, for a while there, there was, at different stages, there was a stubborn three million, then a two point two million, but in the final analysis, really everyone came through. And, um, like I said, we're, we're made whole. And matter of fact, I just met with the tax collectors today. And as of today, we are a half a million dollars better than we were this time last year.
Great, great.
Now, that's great news. It really is.
Yep, great job by all. Uh, one other question on the police overtime. Um, uh, at this time of year, is the, I think it was thirty-two percent you mentioned?
Yes.
Typical, or are we seeing something out of the ordinary?
Well, again, you know, there, there was, there was COVID, um, details. There's also details, um, that are grant-supported, um, distracted driving grants, and we've yet to receive those uh, reimbursements. And also, there's two extra positions for, um, SSO positions, which, uh, we agreed to, uh, settle up and true up at the end of the year, once we know what all of the costs are. So there's, uh, an extra two positions that are in there that will ultimately be reimbursed by the Board of Ed.
And, and this doesn't include, previously, I think we've had issues with overtime in the dispatch.
No.
This is not included with that.
No, actually, um, that's a pleasant surprise. They're right on target. So the, um, the efforts that were made on behalf of, uh, the, the department by the chief really paid off.
Great, great. Yeah, great job by them. Thank you.
Uh, staying with dispatch, uh, I'd like to thank the dispatchers too, because they allowed us to create an MOU within the union that allowed us to bring on a per diem, uh, additional dispatcher, which helped, uh, the overtime for dispatch. So we'd like to thank the chief and also, uh, the dispatch union for working with us on that.
Great point. Awesome.
Great.
All right, I'll shut up now.
Thank you.
Pete, um, yeah, thanks, uh, everybody. Uh, thank you, Greg, for the, uh, for the report. This time last year, how much was in our Waste Management Fund? Do you have that number?
Um, actually, it would have been, well, two point seven less and whatever we put in, um, what, what, what we use for taxes. I don't have that at my disposal, but, uh, I, I can get that to you, uh, tomorrow as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it, it would be, would have been, um, a million, million and a half less than what we have now, somewhere around there.
Thank you.
Any other discussion for Greg?
Greg, I just wanna say thank you for your reporting. I always appreciate that, and thank you for your stewardship.
Thank you, and I appreciate any kind comments that are coming my way.
Greg, Greg, I can do that. I'm a happy fellow.
I, I, I wish they'd spread the wealth a little. I mean, you seem to be the, uh, the
Don't get too busy, Greg.
We all love you, Greg.
Don't get crazy. Did you hear that, Mayor?
Take the compliments while you can, Greg. Don't get too greedy now.
That was another day.
Yeah, I know, hero today, goat tomorrow.
Yeah, that's it.
There you go.
We all know that Olga's behind all of it anyway, Greg. You're just a showman.
You're not supposed to say those things in public.
So there's a strong woman behind the man, that's for sure.
Uh, you know, she.
Yeah, go with that.
Enough said.
Enough said, yeah.
No, she's great. She really is.
She does do a great job.
Yeah, she does.
Guys, you're doing a great job. The whole department, thank you for your work.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, moving on to item number nine, uh, we're gonna have a presentation from Sustainability Connecticut, uh, regarding the twenty twenty-one Silver Certification Benefits for us, and that will be with, uh, Karen Pollard, Julie Bailey, Stephen Gass, and some volunteer coordinators.
Mike, can you unmute? Uh, Ms. Bailey, Mr. Gass, uh, Karen Pollard?
Yes, hello. This is Karen.
Karen.
I think I'm on.
Julie.
Uh, so I, I think, uh, I'd like to make a couple introductions first. Uh, many of you already know Julianne Bailey, uh, as a prominent member of the New Milford community, uh, and a, a supporter of all of our sustainability actions. Uh, she has generously agreed to coordinate our new application to Sustainable CT, uh, Sustainable Connecticut, and, uh, she has brought in Stephen Gass, who, who, several of you may not know, um, but I do have a nice little, um, introduction for him. Uh, Stephen is an innovator with over thirty years' experience creating and marketing digital and traditional learning products. He has held creative leadership positions at companies, including Scholastic and Viacom, and served as President of Sesame Street Online and launched a play and learn company. Today, Stephen runs his own product strategy consulting firm with clients that range from Citibank to the Museum of Modern Art. He serves as a mentor to startup businesses in incubators, start ED, and street entrepreneurs. Is a member of the Education Committee at PBS affiliate WNET, and is a board member of the Public Health and Social Services Agency, the Alliance for Positive Change. A twenty-year, part-time New Milford resident, Stephen recently joined New Milford's twenty-person, twenty twenty-one Sustainable CT Certification Team as co-project leader with Julie. Um, so it has been my pleasure to work with, uh, both Julianne and with Stephen for the last month. Uh, and there is a brief presentation that they will run through for the town council tonight. Uh, but this is an activity that must be completed next summer. They're gonna go over the timeline. Uh, but we have an excellent opportunity, uh, in economic development to achieve the Silver Status. And I just wanna say, from that perspective, that this is definitely to our advantage in economic development. It's something we can really use to promote the future growth of our community. Uh, and, uh, I look forward to seeing this presentation once again. Uh, we are giving it to several boards and commissions as well, because there will be opportunities for many people to participate in the application process. That's actually how it's designed. So at this point, I'll turn it over to, uh, Julie and to Stephen.
Thank you, Karen. Oh, Michael?
I can't see my video.
Yeah, Michael, can you give us video and allow me to share my screen?
I have prom- I have promoted Stephen Gass to a co-host, so you, Stephen, you should be able now to share your screen, and as a co-host, you should be able to, um, uh, I'll send you an invite anyway, uh, either start or stop your video as you so choose, as long as you're a co-host. And I, just give me a second, Julianne. There you go.
Thank you. Stephen, are you on?
I am.
Go for it.
Yep. Okay. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, let me start by saying thank you. I'm really excited to be here and to cross screens with all of you folks tonight. I'm going to start us out on this home screen here. And if you take a look at this map, this map was drawn in nineteen oh six. And as it turns out, the New Milford Historical Society, it was the same year that New Milford installed its very first water fountain on the green for the benefit of townsfolk, horses, and dogs. And here we are, one hundred and fifteen years later, and we're still, this is the good news, we're still asking the question, what can we do to make this town a better place to live? So with that, we're going to start at the top, sort of the view from fifty thousand feet. What is Sustainable Connecticut? Sustainable Connecticut is a statewide, mission-driven, very rigorous, very rich sustainability certification program. It's built on the philosophy that the health and well-being of a town's economy is inextricably linked with the health and well-being of our environment and the health and well-being of the townspeople. The very good news is it's a free program. It is voluntary, and it is all about making Connecticut a more sustainable place through the understanding that towns have much more flexibility to get things done. So it truly is a grassroots kind of movement, and it's a town-by-town initiative. It is funded by a group of different types, different-sized foundations, both foundations at the state level as well with national reach. And the sustainability certification comes to us after we complete a number of actions. And what's interesting about the approach is it is holistic. It goes beyond just what one might traditionally think of as environmental issues. And it looks at what are you doing in the arts? What's happening in housing? What is your zoning process? What are your zoning processes look like? What, what does permitting look like? What are you doing with, with infrastructure, with transportation? So it's, it's robust and it's a complete approach to this issue of sustainability. So very quickly, the program was established just a few years back in two thousand seventeen. There are two levels of certification, the bronze and silver. So the, your certification is determined by the number of points that you agree through this very rigorous program of actions, of which there are probably a few hundred. To date, over half of the municipalities in Connecticut have in fact applied for certification, but less than half have actually achieved it. And a point of pride for us is that our first time out a couple of years ago, we did achieve bronze status in two thousand eighteen, one of the only two towns in Litchfield County. And as of tonight, we have started the process. We've started the ball rolling. And the application to, as Karen mentioned, is due in August. So with that very fast overview, you might be asking, why are we doing this? What's in it for us? The, the way Julie and I sort of look at this is, yes, at the end of the rainbow, there is this certification that comes with a number of its own rewards, but the process itself is pretty powerful. So in addition to the innovations, the insights, the ideas, the programs, the processes, the, the things that we generate along the path to certification, those are ours. Importantly, what it does for, for the town, it gives us a rallying point. It creates this sort of common cause. It creates a townride opportunity for us to share in this, in this vision. Number three tends to be a favorite of everyone listening to this presentation, and that is, it's a source of funding. Sustainable Connecticut will match funds for projects that align with the actions in, in the, in the program. New Milford has already enjoyed some of this with the barn quilt project that Julie put together. And we have just launched a second project that is focused on cleaning up parts of the Great Brook that run through downtown New Milford. So that's just, I mean, we get all of that just for saying, yes, we're going to go for it. Then, once we achieve the certification, we now have this badge, this sort of silver badge of honor that says, we've actually accomplished this, and everyone who sees it, we are recognized for it. There is that sense of collective civic pride, that we are in a town that really cares about all of this stuff and all of us. And importantly, the credential gives us leverage to attract new business, which in turn can attract smart development, which in turn can attract skilled, skilled workforce, which in turn can attract new and younger families. The other thing we have learned from other towns who have participated, once you have the certification, it can be a useful asset when we go to apply for various kinds of grants for other kinds of activities. Okay, so I've talked a lot about these actions. The list here is, is not exhaustive at all. As I said, there are well over a few hundred of these things, but these are just sort of representative and the hoping that it will give you a sense of the breadth and the texture of what this program looks like. So it runs from looking at the way in which are, the, the way we might purchase sustainable goods, watershed programs, arts and culture initiatives, sustainability permitting processes, agriculture practices, energy reduction across municipal buildings is an example of something we might get points for. Food networks, and I know that we, we've, we've got some success stories from the food networks that were put together in the, in the shadows of COVID, and also looking at housing and our approach to helping folks who are unfortunately homeless. So we've talked about what is it? Why are we doing it? What does it look like? What are the things that we have to accomplish? And this slide is all about who's going to get it done. I sort of draw your attention, if it isn't already, to this photograph. It was taken somewhere in the fifties on Candlewood. And it is courtesy of the New York, New York, the New Milford Historical Society. So the team breaks into three talent pools, one from the town, one residents, and one from the Sustainable Connecticut team itself. On the town, Mayor Bass has graciously volunteered to serve as the chair of our certification team. He is assisted by Pat Hembrick, who is going to take the role as, as our upload person, but only in, in a way, we're looking at her as our database manager, as all these bits and pieces of information come, come together. She will be the one making sure that they flow back upstream to Sustainable Connecticut in a rational way, as well as to help us archive it for whatever our needs may be. The town brings a lot of bench strength with Karen from Economic Development, Laura from Town Planning, and Jack from Public Works, also playing sort of key roles on the team, both helping Julie and me global, with some of the global issues, as well as some of the things specific to their particular focus areas in town. Julie and I are co, sort of co-leaders of the project, making sure it all gets done. We, we are also taking on some of the actions themselves. And to date, we are now at a volunteer team of twenty-two residents, each of them with a passion and an expertise for the action area that, on which they will focus. The sustain, the Sustainable Connecticut team has been nothing short of extraordinary. They are at the University of the, I'm blanking on the university name, but is a group of environmentalists, academics who are spearheading this project, and they are deeply committed, deeply passionate. And from our point of view, the other thing that's really appealing, wildly accessible and responsive to our needs, to our questions. They are really on our team. Their goal is to help us win, which is really pretty fantastic. In fact, tomorrow morning, Julie and I are kicking off the full complement of the the New Milford resident team, and one of the key players from Sustainable Connecticut is joining the meeting to help with the orientation to the project. Okay, so how are we going to get there? We're now in October. Our goal is August twenty twenty-one. We've already started most of the key so project pieces by establishing our team, partnering with the folks in town, and we promise that we will minimize our demands on you, but for this to work, this is a partnership, and we're very excited about it. And, and already, our experience has been working with the folks in town. It has just been, it, it has been smooth, easy, and comforting, to say the least. So over the next couple of months, we will continue to sort of fine-tune our inventory of what's possible, what's viable, taking a look at what do we have already in the pipeline, what might we do that we could garner some points from? And we'll move that forward. Our goal is to maximize our points. Just very briefly, bronze certification is two hundred points out of probably, there, there may be a total of seven or eight hundred. Silver certification is four hundred. Our rough audit of what we, what Julie and I believe is attainable is somewhere hovering between five and six hundred. So we're feeling very confident. That doesn't mean that we don't have a lot of work to do, but we think that we can make this happen collectively with you folks and with, with the team. So somewhere in early April, our goal is to submit everything we have, all the collateral, all of our backup to Sustainable Connecticut, to get their feedback and to get their insights into what we need to do to ensure that each point we think we are going to get, we in fact will get. And that is also like, it, it's an awesome benefit to us, knowing that Sustainable Connecticut is going to help us get where we need to go. And then we'll submit in August, and we should hear probably within two to three months of submission. All right, so every presentation has an ask, and the good news here, unlike many things, we are not asking for money. And, but we are asking for we're, we're asking you to serve as active thought partners with us to get this done. So, you know, we're looking for your input. We're looking for your insight, your guidance. We're looking for your approvals on those things in the list where we need a document that says, yes, the town, the town is behind this initiative. We're looking to you to sort of be part of our little outreach and to communicate what we're doing and how spread our word across all of your networks. We are looking for you to, you know, as you get more familiar with the project itself, say to, you know, there's an interesting thing happening with this organization, or this individual might have some interesting insights for you. Any warm introductions would be greatly welcomed. We are looking for you, should you have the time, the passion, the inclination, we're, we're asking you to roll up your sleeves. And if there's something you'd like to work on and help us with, you know, welcome, we welcome you all. There may be opportunities in some of the action areas where some of our responsibilities are to have trainings and webinars where maybe you'll run one, maybe you'll participate in one, or maybe you'll just help to promote one. We are looking for interns. If you folks know any college students or young professionals who might be interested in this type of project, have them reach out to Julie as a first step, and we'll take it from there. And then we, we really want you to ask us lots of questions and, you know, do your best to respond to our emails, and we will do our best to minimize the number of them. So that's, that's most of the ask. And I'm going to ask you one more thing, and I'm going to ask you to sort of join this collective vision and imagine what we can pull off and what we can ensure if we, if we work together as a team to ensure that the health and well-being of the town economy, the health and well-being of our environment, and the health and well-being of the townsfolk and our collective spirit. So that's it. I hope I didn't talk too fast. I, 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 I hope you now have a reasonable picture. And with that, Julie and I are happy to take questions tonight, or if you prefer to, you know, do it in writing, we can do that as well. I leave, I leave that to you. And thanks. You're welcome.
Anybody have any questions for Julie?
I have a couple.
Okay, Chris?
So one, so thank you for the presentation.
Oh, you're welcome.
It's informative. I appreciate that. Are you all plugged in with the, the planning department and specifically aligned with the, our plan of conservation and development?
Yeah, in fact, the, the PSCD is a big piece of this, and Sustainable Connecticut actually asks you to be aligned with it. We are presenting to zoning and planning first week in November. Karen has been invaluable in helping us to make all the connections around town, but yeah, absolutely.
Great. And so we've, we've made bronze, so there's, there's a process put in place, and I'm sure there's a lot of work to get to bronze. Getting to silver is, and, and I don't want to minimize the effort, because I'm sure it's a large effort, but is it kind of doing more of the same? Is that what we're doing here?
Yeah, I, I, it's a similar process. It is a lot bigger. It's a lot more rigorous. There are a number of things that, that we've, we accomplished to get us to bronze that we can take advantage of, that, you know, we can look at and see, can we just resubmit the same documentation? Some of it is good for a year. Some of it is good for two or three. Some of it has a, a lifetime. So we absolutely will be looking at that to minimize the wear and tear on everybody.
And I guess one last question from a, a business perspective, attracting business to our town. If we achieve silver certification, is that, I mean, is that something that the businesses really look for? Does that, is that a big differentiator for us?
You know, the, the program is at its, you know, it, it's, it's just a few years old. But in fact, other towns and Sustainable Connecticut has told us that people have been able to leverage it. In order to get to silver, you really do have to be very serious about your sustainability plan, program, initiatives, and it does, it does say across all of those domains that I outlined, I outlined upfront that this town takes this stuff very seriously. We have, you know, we, we approached the sustainability from a point of view of inclusivity as well. The other thing too is that Sustainable Connecticut is part of something called the Sustainable States, which is part of something called the Sustainable States, which is a national grassroots program to do this. Again, based on this idea that it is, you know, it's the, it's, it's, it's us, it's the folks on the ground who are going to make a difference. And we are the ones who can change things. I, I think the more we work together to beat the drum on this, the more we can trade against it, the more we can leverage it. Even if it means we do, we have to do a little bit of explaining to upfront. But it's, it's a very, it is a robust and powerful certification.
Great, thank you. Again, appreciate the present, the information.
Oh, you're welcome.
Quick question, Steve. This is Katie Francis. When would you be sharing the list of things that you have decided would be getting us to this next level?
Okay, so tomorrow, we could, we could share the top line, you know, like all of the, all of the major categories. What Julie and I have done is, I mean, it is like a, like a seven or eight page spreadsheet with detail that is beyond, but happy to share it with everybody.
I think we could handle looking at seven or eight pages, but I just, you're talking about it. I'm just curious when
Yeah.
It's hard to imagine, you, you know, what, what you're talking about is great. I just, it would be a lot more concrete in our minds if we knew exactly what was on the list.
We can send, we can send the list of, I mean, there's a couple, there are a couple of things going on. There's a 2020 list and then there's a 2021 list of actions that's a work in progress from Sustainable Connecticut. So we have cobbled together our working list by merging these two. So we can, we can send a master list so you have a, a pretty, a pretty good sense of what are the activities that are involved?
Well, it would help to have people buy into this and help you as you, you know, as you say, this is a collaborative effort. I think that the sooner that you let people understand exactly what you're talking about, I think you'll have more
Yeah.
interest.
I, I, I totally agree. And the goal of tonight was to present that overview so that when you get this list of stuff, it has a context.
Katie?
Hi Julie.
Hi Katie, I think your question was an excellent one. What we're in the process of doing is seeing which of these over 200 actions we have projects that will respond to the requirements.
Right.
And in some cases, at least four, for example, and let me give you a couple of examples. They ask us for something called a natural resources and wildlife inventory. They ask us for an open space inventory. They ask us for an, an inventory really of our historical assets and what we're doing to sustain them. And we have folks who are volunteers who are working on all three of these. And the number, 550 points that we think we can get are utterly dependent upon whether we finish these projects. Now, many of these things already have answers and responses and documentation can prove our town has done that. But what we're in the process of doing now, and we'll talk about tomorrow in our team meeting is how likely do you think these extra projects that we're looking at completing by August 1st can get done? For example, another one that we're looking at, and this will be the final example that I'll give you right now off the top of my head. We're working in partnership with H B A to work on one of the tributaries of the Housatonic, which is called Great Brook and crosses town. And as it moves across town, it becomes steadily more polluted, more impacted, filled with trash, eroded banks, et cetera. And we have a couple of projects that could be taken up by neighbors and residents that would make a huge difference in the flow and the water quality of this. And also, if you're going to expect extreme storm and hot storm events as the climate gets, changes basically, you really want to have your waterways clear and unimpacted so that the extra storm water can be carried away. So that's the kind of project that we're looking at doing on all fronts.
Good example. Thank you. Perfect.
Pete, I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you both to Julie and to Steve. I appreciate your efforts and I, I know it's a large undertaking. I do remember when we went for the bronze. And do you guys know how long the bronze certification is good for? Is that like a lifetime?
Three years.
Three years?
Yes, and we got it in 2018. So on 2021, we have to either recertify ourselves as bronze or go for silver.
Okay, and I love your, I love the enthusiasm that we're looking at five, 600 points out of a possible 800. And I love the idea of the common cause. You know, with all the diversity that we have in our world right now, it's, talk about New Milford Proud and, and Pete's tagline on that. I, I think it's great. I'm, I'm all for it and I'm happy to help in any way. Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve or Julie? Well, thank you, everybody. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah. See you later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Nice to meet you guys. Bye.
Bye. We'll move forward. Nice segue to item number 10, which would be an update from our economic development director, Karen.
Hello, everyone. Very good, very glad to be giving another update. So this month in October, we started, the businesses all moved into phase three on October 8th. There have been several adjustments from phase two to phase three. And much of that had to do with allowing restaurants and other types of businesses to move to 75% occupancy. So you will definitely see changes inside of restaurants, inside of personal care businesses that are now at 75%. The restaurants are going to still keep using the outdoor dining as long as the weather will hold out. There have been a few tweaks to what's going on outdoors. And we, we are encouraging businesses through a special approval process that we have at the, at the instituted at the town level for both outdoor dining continuing and also outdoor display. Because the state is still encouraging us to use outdoors a- as much as we can, again, as long as the weather holds out. And so we have put in streamlined approvals for that. The size of indoor and outdoor events has also increased. Again, that is dependent upon our statistics regarding COVID infections staying low, which in New Milford, we are, we are not on the red list. We are definitely in a more positive situation than some of the other parts of the state. To go into phase three, the mayor and I held an online Q and A for the business community. And the chamber also sponsored and held an in-person event at Petty Bone, which was recorded and also put online. So if any businesses are missing any information or have questions about how to handle phase three, what's allowed, what's not allowed, they should definitely be getting in touch with my office. It's also been sent out in the regular email blast updates that I've been sending. Also, just last week, the governor announced that new small business grants will be available. The, the applications will go live in the week of November 9th. And businesses will be eligible to apply for $5,000. There are eligibility requirements and they do have to be small businesses. And they also have to not have received other state of Connecticut COVID assistance since March. So if a business has not received any other type of assistance and is a small business, and that includes home-based businesses, that, that application will be coming out the week of November 9th. Again, that was also sent out to the business community in the last email blast. And it will be going out multiple more times. I think that announcement, the news is traveling very fast. I hope they're ready for a lot of applications. Also, another big issue that has happened is we did have an additional business announce that their temporary closure is now permanent. That's Lenny's Flower Shop on Elm Street. They have divested their equipment and supplies and, and I did see a real estate sign out in front the other day when I went past. A new brewery is looking at the, at opening and opening, making opening plans where the former Bad Dream Brewing was. We are working through the approval process with them, including the extra requirement for food. That has turned into quite a stumbling block across the state for breweries and wineries and continues to be an issue where food trucks generally don't operate in the winter. So that, again, it's, it's become somewhat of an issue. Yokohama should be opening in the next couple of weeks. I think we're all excited to see what the new space looks like. The outside of the building is really coming along well. Some of the other activities that have been going on, you just heard about Sustainable Connecticut. That has been on my radar again for probably three months now. But of course, the official kickoff meeting is tomorrow, as Stephen and Julianne mentioned. Let's see, we have been having additional meetings regarding holiday events for businesses and participating and what kinds of events can be held and should be held and, and how large can they be? And so that has continued. There are a lot of things planned in downtown and in the rest of town regarding businesses and their events coming up for the holidays. I did a welcome letter for New Milford Living Magazine that encouraged all people in New Milford or who enjoy New Milford businesses to commit to spending some of their holiday budget on small businesses. So whether that means gift cards to local businesses, whether that means purchases in local businesses, they, they are just really needing our support. So whether you commit to, you know, 50% or $200 or whatever commitment makes sense, we are asking folks in New Milford to make that commitment to helping local businesses for the holiday season. We are working on a brownfield grant application that is due later this week. So that is, again, we're working with a consultant, but that doesn't mean that we are lifted from all responsibility. It means that we just have someone to help coordinate everything. We still have to supply a lot of information. Let's see, and then also I know the mayor's going to talk about this next. Long-term recovery has been a topic for the Economic Development Commission and the corporation for the last couple of months. They are eager to participate in the town's planning process for long-term recovery. And again, I, well, there is going to be a planning process for the next six months. There's also a, a lot of long-term beyond that work for those members to get involved in. So that is my update, but of course, I'm always happy to take any questions or comments.
Any questions for Karen? Chris?
Karen, in phase three for restaurants can go to 75%. But I know there are some restaurants that, of course, that 75% also mandate you maintain distance, certain distance between tables. So I know there are some restaurants in town that phase three didn't really mean much because they're at 50%, they're already, you know, they, they can't pack it anymore and still maintain that sort of distance. Any idea how many restaurants in town are in that particular predicament? And, and what can we do to help them?
Well, so there is something that they can do. And you might have seen some pictures from Three Brothers Diner regarding, one of the solutions is that you can put solid non-porous dividers in between booths that will allow you to be closer than six feet apart. And, and, but it has to be non-porous, it has to be something that can be cleaned in between customers. So, so, so that should allow small places like Johanna's, like Three Brothers, like some of the other places that are close, to be able to put in either Plexiglas or some type of structural divider in between closed spaces. Where it's going to be more difficult is in the open areas where you have maybe a four-top table that where there's no ability to put a divider in. So no, I don't have an answer to the number of businesses that have not been able to do that because many of them have gone to some kind of divider system. But if anyone wants assistance with that, they are certainly welcome to call my office and will of course, work with the building department and all of the department heads to make sure that whatever's being done meets the requirements and that is not going to cause any new problems down the road.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Karen for the update. What are the restaurants doing for ventilation? Are they adding, adding new systems or are they turning fans on low or? My, my understanding with the COVID that it's best to have some sort of air movement, not fans blowing on people, but some sort of air movement. And I understand that there's a, a movement out there about bring your own blanket.
Yes, so obviously eating outdoors is still a very viable option. Hopefully we'll have many more nice days to come. And even, even after that, one of the things we've talked about is and looked at is what do ski areas do? What do other outdoor venues do in the wintertime?
They serve hot toddies.
And you wear, you wear your ski clothes outside.
They serve hot drinks, Karen, outside. They give you hot rum drinks. That's what they do.
That'll work too. But you know, we are looking for ways we can keep the outdoor dining where you've got lots of ventilation. There are new rules for tents in phase three. You can now have two sides down. But one of the challenges is, and again, you know, this has all kind of come about in the last couple of weeks, is the state fire marshal and the state building department officials have announced that they will not allow heaters inside of a tent, even with the two sides up. So that means that you can only have heaters if you do not have a tent or roof covering, I guess, is, is one of the, the challenges. Although Tuscany, the restaurant right on Main Street, is allowed to have a heater in theirs because it's, it's high enough that, that it's not, it's not considered in that category. But some of the other heaters will have to be moved or I believe the fire marshal, Kevin, has already notified the businesses in New Milford that already had heaters, that they either have to have no covering and to, so such as at the Abbey, they have heaters outside, but they're not in a tent, they have just umbrellas. That's totally allowed. So, so there's that, that bit of a challenge that we are working through with all of the restaurants. And, you know, so far the weather is still decent, although it's definitely gotten colder this week. So we'll, we'll see how much we can get people to eat outside. Yes, bring your own blanket, order hot drinks, whatever it takes to, to keep the restaurants open. And, and then, oh, what was the other question?
About ventilation. What are the restaurants doing?
So there's a couple of different alternatives. You know, obviously at this time of year, it's, you, you really can't have your door open the way you could during the summertime. So there are a number of different things that the restaurants are doing or, or other businesses as well, for that matter. Definitely changing filters through, in your ventilation system on a regular basis is, is going to be essential. Some businesses have installed small fans. Some do have fans in their business. Again, you, you're not looking for a wind tunnel effect, but you certainly want then the air to move and, and hopefully be circulated out. They don't really want you just recirculating the same air either, which is why I mentioned the filters. So most systems are set up with some kind of external ventilation of their heat and exhaust. And that seems to have been working well enough so far. So again, you know, the big thing on that is not overcrowding a space so that the ventilation becomes a, a even bigger problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Karen?
I just one comment that Karen touched upon, but it needs to be reiterated and hopefully people can, and spread the word is the character of New Milford depends on the small businesses that are here, the restaurants, the stop, the stores. the character of New Milford depends on the small businesses that are here, the restaurants, the stores, even the service people in town. You know, we don't want to become, you know, just a black and white town as far as plane change or whatnot. We like the character of these small businesses. And we really need to support them at this time. They need our help. They need to be supported. They need help from the town or the economic development corporation, however it is, to make sure that when things over, these businesses are still standing because it's going to be sad to see a lot of them go if that becomes the case.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, counselor. That is a continuing concern of mine. We have been extremely fortunate that the number of permanent closures has still been very small. I would love for that to continue, but again, this is looking to be longer term. And some of the restrictions are very difficult to manage. You know, I'm very glad we're in phase three. I hope we stay in phase three solidly and that businesses can recapture some of their lost revenue during the holidays. This is an important time of year for everyone, which is why it's so important that we all make that commitment to spend our dollars locally in local businesses.
Any other questions for Karen?
No.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item eleven. This would be the first item A. I'll make the motion to approve the creation of our long-term recovery committee, which is a temporary committee.
Second.
Real quick, I would like to bring up if I can. Could you guys see this on the screen?
Nope. Not yet.
It's coming now, Pete. Yep.
I see.
There it is. We got it.
So basically, the state has asked us to start with a long-term recovery planning. And since we now moved into stage three, it would be a good time for us to really look at the opportunity. But as they talk about our shared path, here Governor Lamont, working together with residents, especially those that have urgent needs, the more we can help them bounce back from COVID-19, the better for the whole community itself is. Here's the factors of successful community recovery, effective decision-making, integration of community recovery and planning, well-managed recovery, proactive community engagement, well-administered financial acquisition, organizational flexibility and resilience building. They learned, as you can see here, there were some lessons learned from Hurricane Sandy and Maria. They can and should use the disaster case management process to help survivors identify unmet needs, no matter what the emergency is. Federal and state funds should be maximized through disaster case management. Disaster-related unmet needs will be verified to avoid duplication. Recovery is local. We need to hear from the community, voice in their needs. Then fund those needs with sustainable recovery as a goal. The needs emerging are food, health, medical, rent and mortgages, utilities and banking assistance, mental health and crisis counseling. You can see in the black bold statewide emergency response, most effective when our state-level recovery teams work together with the coordinated efforts with our local communities. The shared goals for this recovery, all county residents receive the assistance they need. Our communities are confident the process is fair. The city suburbs and small towns are treated equitably in terms of need. As they say, our residents, communities, or state recover as quickly and fully as possible. So the recovery approach, here's a FEMA coordination map. It shows for large-scale events. You see where it says in the two circles in the middle, a federal disaster coordinator, a state coordinator. And you can see branching off the top is the state, federal, and down below, the local community is actually involved in both. Strategically united local, state, and federal efforts. As you can see, their goal is to unite all the efforts. That eases the execution. Talks about our towns and cities answering the state federal programs. And also one that they definitely talked about, nonprofit partners and voluntary agents active in disaster void. Agencies are providing emergency assistance to those most in need. Statewide recovery, LTRC, talks about planning for long-term economic recovery across our state. Identify unmet needs and working with partners to respond. The Connecticut Long-Term Recovery LTR, one of the fourteen work functions that comprise state response frame. And you can see the different Demus regions. So we are in region five, and then you see there's one, two, three, and four. We are in region five. Engagement with local communities, statewide response, as we talked about previously, is most effective when our state-level recovery teams work together with our local teams. Each community is identified as long-term recovery coordinator. As you can see on your agenda, Mr. Levin, Jeremy Levin, has graciously offered to be our recovery coordinator chairman of this committee. And recovery support local leadership, talk about the creation, coordination of activities. You work with your state officials, participate in damage and impact assessments, organize recovery, ensure inclusiveness in the community recovery process, communicate recovery priorities to the federal and state, incorporate mitigation, resilience, sustainability, accessibility, and lead development of community recovery plans that are actionable and feasible. The LTRCs, which are long-term recoveries, are an important way for the communities make sure our local resources are pulling together most effectively to meet the needs of residents. As you can see, at the same time, local recovery committees are important. The local community can identify gaps, develop a comprehensive understanding which members of the community might need more support in the recovery process. A long-term recovery committee is an important and effective channel to communicate state emergency management team gaps needs. Inclusive inclusivity agenda also includes that we need to be inclusive. Low-income and marginalized communities, people who are negatively affected by health issues, people with access and functional needs, workers with the option of staying home, people experiencing homelessness or who have a lack to affordable, safe, and healthy housing, people who have limited food security, those with access to transportation or life-sustaining supplies, people who live in rural regions, immigrants, asylum seekers, refugees, and the undocumented. Our long-term recovery should bring together local government, volunteer agencies, community and faith-based organizations, philanthropy and private sector partners. As you can see on this committee, we have a wide-ranging assortment. And we'll continue to add on to this committee for the next meeting as well. Here's a long-term recovery structure that the state advises, this is kind of how it should look. You can see recovery coordinator, Mr. Levin is here. And then here's the volunteer needs, different sets of services. And then we're going to try and fill this out all at the next meeting, but we have here kind of the start, the bones of it. Unmet needs, talks about lessons learned, how to organize unmet needs or born out of that experience. Also, unmet needs include food, health, medical needs, rent, mortgages, utilities, banking assistance, mental health and crisis counseling. The fourth seed, we need to do is communicate the need, coordinate the programs, collaborate with our partners, and cooperate to maximize available funding. Building the local unmet needs coordination, we talked about, we have Mr. Levin. We're going to identify the major needs of the community. We're building the community. We'll then create some program guidelines and then look at building funds. We're fortunate here to have a number of nonprofits, United Way being one of them. Also, many nonprofits that are in the area that also help in so many ways already. This talked about an example of Berkshire-type foundation's action plan. This is something of a template that we'll be giving to the long-term committee so they can review and see best practices. These are the initial steps, and I'll make sure you guys get this deck tonight to the council. And disaster case management approach, talk about federal and state funds should be maximized. Disaster case management, unmet needs must be verified to avoid duplication of benefits. Then the disaster case mission statement, again, is to strengthen the disaster coordination to make sure that everyone gets their needs met in a safe and efficient manner. And then no one falls through the cracks. Assistant guidelines, we decide who the victim of a COVID-19 disaster is. Definition might be of someone who suffered a loss, need or hardship. What is the loss, need, or hardship? Loss of income needed verified by document. See, what are the classifications of financial assistance? If planning for effective efforts, you utilize, prioritize, and then connect. And that's the most efficient way that FEMA has come to realize, especially in any kind of disaster. So we're going to follow the mythology of what they're saying to maximize time inefficiency to make sure that we make sure all of our needs are met here in our community. Then resources they have here, which they'll have, these are resources from five, is our Demus Coordinator, John Field. And then up in Torrington is Mr. Connor. They're very helpful to us. Here's some additional resources that they'll have, and I'll make sure you guys have the deck. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just have, I have a recommendation, just looking at your list. And I think you should probably have somebody on there from NuVon Health, which is New Milford Hospital, Danbury Hospital, because we're going to have a lot of people suffering from post-COVID syndrome. And we just are starting to see the tip of the iceberg about people having long-term effects. And if we should lose the ACA and nothing comes through in the meantime to replace that, we're going to have a lot of people without health insurance that have very serious complications from COVID. And I think the numbers are going to be really large. So if you get somebody from NuVon Health, you know, I think that would be great.
I left a message for Dr. Kay. Just waiting for him to call back, see who they would be on. So hopefully.
Great. Okay, that's great.
Any other questions? Okay. Could we move to the number B?
Do we have an approval of the creation of the committee, the temporary committee?
Give her a second.
Yep.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, so eleven B, we'll move that we approve the long-term recovery committee members. The term for all people on this list would be from October twenty-six, twenty-twenty till March, I'm sorry, April twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-one. And they are Jeremy Levin, Catherine Francis, Laura Reagan, Ivana Butera, Jasmine DeCusenjarra, Mike Cresspin, Ellie Gnome, Paul Murphy, Karen Pollard, Justin Culmer, Emily Harvey, and Dana Bezera.
Second.
Any discussion on these names, and we'll be bringing forward other names at our next meeting as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Night. Thank you. Everybody.
Mr. Mayor, are you still there?
Yes, sir.
What is a jet? Hi, bleeding heart, bleed. Good night, Mr. Mayor. Good night, Mr. Mayor.